We are gonna get right into it. A lot to discuss. I will go ahead and take roll call. Dr. Anderson, hello. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm back.
Good afternoon. Ms. Cohen? We'll be a couple of minutes late. Is there not Kofax?
Yeah.
Mr. Frisch?
Hello.
Ms. Ismorehizer?
Good afternoon.
Ms. Kies-Gamara?
Hello.
Hello. Ms. Maron?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. O'Mech?
Here.
Ms. Tolan?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Brabrand, are you back with us? Hopefully, he will be joining. There he is.
Hello. Hello.
Hi, Dr. Brabrand, welcome back.
Thank you.
We are, we are ready to start. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we begin. We will, for the board, be rescheduling our forum topic that we had to punt from this morning and will be reaching out to everybody to get that back on the schedule as soon as possible. And we are going to do our best to adhere to a 4:00 PM close time, as is our normal work session day. And I know it's been a long day and this board has, and staff have not had any breaks. So with that, we will go ahead and let me just see where we left off. I'm sorry. We were, Ms. O'Mech, you were up next. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have a problem? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I just have a point of order. Are we also rescheduling the budget piece to a later date as well then?
That had been res- We don't have a real budget today?
That was rescheduled for-
That was, yeah.
Okay, because I saw it earlier today, it was still on the schedule, so that's the reason I asked. Thank you.
No, you were right. I actually saw that too. I think it's been updated, though. Thank you for that clarification.
The clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. We will, okay, Ms. O'Mech said her hand was not up. Ms. Mc- Well, I don't know. I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak. Ms. Kies-Gamara, have you had your opportunity? If not, we're gonna go on go talks.
On the calendar topic?
Yes.
Yes, I spoke. I made the suggestion about the-
Oh, yes, yes, the motion. I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
I didn't know if it was you or me.
No. It's been a long day. I apologize. Ms. O'Mech, you are next. Go ahead.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we still had more people. Okay, so going back to kind of the framing that Dr. Williams started us off with, you know, of a path, you know, we have three options in terms of paths, exclusion, assimilation, or pluralism, and hoping that, you know, my colleagues and hearing what they've shared, going along the lines of pluralism. I mean, I'm starting to kind of hear that, that there's some more thought that needs to go into this. And, and, you know, I know Dr. Brabrand had mentioned, if directed, that he'd be, he would, he would look into what that could look like. So I actually, and I, I understand that motions and work sessions are extremely unpopular. I, I know that folks, you know, feel more comfortable with that being elsewhere, but given the timing, we're, we're set to vote on March 18th. We know that we have legal concerns with the, the options that are before us. So I actually would like to move to direct the superintendent to develop a new calendar option to particularly account for legal considerations, instructional concerns and disruption, student wellness, both the socio-economic, socio-emotional piece and the academic piece, the support staff pay component, absenteeism data that's been presented, operational disruption, you know, staff days and planning time, survey preferences, transparency and community climate, and any and all other equity considerations. And I believe there's, there's interest in the second.
Yep, I will now, I will ask if there's anybody willing to second that motion. Ms. McLaughlin, I see your hand up. Are you seconding? Nope. Ms. Maron, your hands up.
Guess I'll second.
Okay. Do you have that written? Okay, very good. I will give our colleagues just a minute to look over this.
And just to clarify, Ms. Pokarski, I just sent this to Eileen, so I don't want folks to get the wrong understanding. This really did emerge out of the discussion.
Okay, that is fine, and I, I will give you your time to speak to your motion now.
Okay, I mean, I think folks kind of know where we're at. Right now, we're looking at options with, with legal problems. And given where, you know, the community's been at, what the process has been so far, what the data has revealed, I think it goes without saying that we need to give this an intentional deliberate look. And that we can bring all the various community groups that are concerned to a place where we can address all their concerns. One of the most unfortunate things that came out of all this is to say, we have our support staff, or we have our religious minorities, or, or we have, you know, various groups. But there are ways to be smart and creative about the calendar to ensure that we don't sell anyone short and that we are an inclusive system along the lines of the pluralistic view that Dr. Williams started our meeting off with. So that, that's all. I mean, I think we all, it's straightforward. Everyone kind of knows the importance of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Mech. Ms. Maron, do you want to speak to second? Ms. Maron still with us? Oh, I see her microphone. Ms. Maron? Looks like she may have been kicked off. Ms. Maron, can you hear us?
I-
Go ahead if you can hear us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Right, sorry, sorry about that. Yes, I just think that the, I think that the calendar options that we have now are not, that we need to reflect more criteria than what we have now. My, my one consideration is, what can we do to create, create something that we're gonna need very quickly so we can solidify next year's school year? And what can we do in a much more robust calendar creation process that might take longer? I'm, I'm just not clear about that, but I do think we need to have some more options and considerations at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll go straight into the speakers. Mr. Frisch?
Thanks. I support this motion. I, I think this is what should have happened in the first place. And I think this will enable us to elevate the conversation so that communities don't feel pitted against each other, which has been the worst part of this conversation about the calendar. And I'm hopeful that the superintendent and his team can come up with a reasonable additional option for us. To that end, I do have some questions about the options before us, if staff can respond. Calendar C was, can, can someone answer these questions? What sort of community input was gathered around calendar C in advance of it being put together?
Mr. Frisch, we got some of our stakeholder feedback was from our employees around the impact of calendars A and B on their pay. We, we had some school board members share that they had had some concerns. We did not take a comprehensive review of all stakeholders for that, but we did have some feedback and created calendar C based on that.
But prior to that work session, we'd never seen this, and no one in the community had seen it either.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to be-
I'm sorry, Mr. Frisch, I am so sorry. I wanted to ask a point of privilege to answer the question for you because I don't think Dr. Brabrand captured it. And I was-
He did perfectly fine for me. He did perfectly fine for me.
Ms. McLaughlin, just hold tight, hold tight. Your turn will come.
So to that end, I'd just like to, to say, one of the reasons that I support this motion is because whatever people think of options A and B, you know, the calendars we've presented, that we've been presented with, have problems, as, as has been articulated. Calendar C, which would be the only one left on the table if A or B is not selected, did not, was not subjected to any sort of rigorous examination by the public or by this board in its, in the consultation of its creation, other than expressing some initial concerns with A and B. And to me, that's not enough. What this motion does is it directs what should have happened in the first place. It says, okay, here are all the moving pieces. Try and come up with something that does best by answering these questions. And it includes the legal consideration, which frankly, I think, in our first part of this discussion, it became pretty clear that legal considerations were not given to any of the calendars until just recently. And that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, you're up now.
I'm sorry, it took me a little while to turn on my camera. One of the things that I, I want to be sure that is included in, in this calendar that Dr. Brabrand and staff will be developing is that there's a clear understanding of the feedback that has been received in the hours-long discussions we've had today. We've had some very good ideas on the table from both Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. Kies-Gamara that speaks to how can we be inclusive of all of our populations? One of the things that I shared earlier, and I will share it now, that I'm concerned about is if in our haste perhaps to determine thresholds, we are going to, we are going to exclude other groups. So I want us to be very mindful of that. I, I'd like to see some reflection here in terms of how we can incorporate some of the ideas discussed earlier to include a more robust blackout dates, more robust regulations and, and guidance, not recommendations, expectations of staff to ensure that we don't have any of our students feel the burden of having, of wanting to participate in their religious observances, not just for one, two, or three groups. So I want to be sure that Dr. Brabrand has a full understanding of all of the feedback that has been provided in the hours that we've been engaging in this discussion. And Dr. Brabrand, I'd like to have some reassurances from you that you are clear of all of the discussions that each of us had and all of the points of view that each of us has outlined for you today.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Anderson. Certainly, this motion is, is quite clear. And I do know that Ms. Kies-Gamara may have, I, I don't speak for her, but she may have some additional guidelines for taking into account. But yes, I and our staff were listening very intently to all the conversation today and would take all of that feedback into a review along with the bullet points listed here.
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, you're next.
Thank you. I first want to pick up on something that Mr. Frisch should ask because it's really important for the board and the public to understand. Calendar C was simply supposed to be the baseline. If we did not insert these new religious holidays into the calendar, that's all that was as meeting managers. Ms. Cohen and I brought that up. Dr. Brabrand understood that. And to be clear, calendar A and B were not vetted by the public at all. We have never surveyed our, our greater community, which is always our practice on the calendar development, is to survey the community. We have no feedback from our community that they want us to add days off that impact working families, that impact all the other students who aren't observing these holidays with disrupted learning and disrupted meal service. There's so many things that are involved here, but I do want to really emphasize, if that's the litmus test on calendar C, calendar C was the status quo. It's what, they were building it based on this current year calendar, other than shifting spring break away from Easter. That was it. But I do agree that calendars A and B were absolutely, there's no mandate from our community on this. More importantly, I want to make sure Dr. Brabrand, to what Dr. Anderson said, what we've identified is there's at least seven, possibly 10 or more religious observances that are reflected in our community. And so I want to be more specific that board members who've talked about a strong, robust regulation that you and your team must adhere and find accountability among all of your principals and teachers with blackout dates to honor these religious holidays and observances. That's the path forward with floating days for students to take without any question, without any academic penalty or extracurricular loss to be able to observe their holidays. That, to my colleagues, to the public, to the superintendent, that is what I hope to see coming out of this calendar based on everything that's listed here by Ms. O'Mech. So I will support the motion because it, it does say it's not limited to all these things. But honestly, Dr. Brabrand, unless you're gonna define how you'll measure and know and be able to identify what your threshold is or which holidays get put into a calendar because of operational impact, that, to me, has not been answered. And I really worry again about the impact on student loss of learning, working families, and employees when we start to create what will absolutely look like a religious calendar and not a secular calendar. And to my colleagues, I will join anyone who wants to lobby the board supervisors, the, the state general assembly. If they would like us to do some more religious observations as a county community, that's great. But the school board's job is not to, to do that. Our job is to make sure that every child has that. So that's, that's how strongly I sit on this one. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Thanks. I'm definitely happy to support this. You know, one suggestion to, to me and going back and looking at some of the conversations that we had with concerns to who, who played a role and how we created it is that, you know, we have this awesome FCPS equity group that we engaged when we talked about SR and R changes. And, you know, I, hugely representative of all the different stakeholders in FCPS. And I find that we sort of consistently, like recreate the wheel every time we want buy-in on equity issues. And so my hope, and I know, under old management. So I know that Dr. Williams has an outstanding sense of who the players are already, even though she's only been here eight weeks. And so I really look forward to seeing this become something where we're willing to have a conversation that also equality and equity are not the same thing. So how do we make sure that we're not disadvantaging folks who, you know, for their, for their religion, which is whether in the intention, it is the real effect of what's happening in our schools? So how do we, how do we mitigate that? But I am supportive and I, I appreciate Ms. O'Mech bringing this up.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you so much. And I'm glad to follow Ms. Cohen. I don't want to have Ms. Maron's comment lost, though, that given the shortness of time, this may be an interim calendar that we do this year for next year and that we will continue to make refinements over time, especially because of the importance to engage the broader community. And so that would be the thing that I would encourage. Additionally, I'm glad that you put the survey preferences in there because the elongation of the school year does cause challenges for families and our workers. And I do want to clarify that when we talk about the impact on our hourly workers, delaying their ability to get paid until later in the year does have an impact on those workers because they happen to have bills that are regular every month. But I would ask if we could include in this direction to the superintendent, language on the importance of inclusivity. And so it's a new calendar option that is more inclusive, but also addresses this list of items. And the complement to it is the detailed regulation with enforceability measures.
That sounds like a- That sounds like a friendly, a friendly tack on. Would you be okay with that, Ms. Ms. O'Mech?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned it's not limited to various considerations, so.
Okay. Can we please with that then, and if there aren't any other objections to that? We will move on to, I think Ms. Kies-Gamara had her hand up and, and was kicked off.
Thank you, Ms. Pokarski. And I'm, I'm glad to, and thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax, for allowing me to go. I, I think I want to clarify, because I had mentioned earlier that I wanted to make some motions. And so I think if, Ms. O'Mech, if you could clarify, it looks to me that your primary purpose is to ask for another calendar to be considered. But you want to make sure these considerations that are listed are taken into account. Is that accurate?
Yes, and in the context of our conversations, right, so.
Okay, so this doesn't conflict with what I have just shared with all the board members, which I was planning on, you know, presenting, you know, after people had time to give input, but since you made this motion, I didn't want there to be any confusion. So as long as you are, and, and it sounds as though what you're asking for is simply that we have another consideration besides the ones that have already been posted. I can support that. And then I'd like my colleagues to know that I have sent an email with two specific, with language for two possible motions, both of which, one would discuss the possible blackout days, making sure we're looking at that absenteeism, that we're reporting that to the community, identifying that, and setting up a regulation that governs behavior irrespective of what calendar we end up choosing. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion. Dr. Brabrand, does that make sense to you? Are you on?
Yes.
Is that clear?
Yeah, Ms. Kies-Gamara, either, either that, I guess, would be handled separately. Again, this is the board's decision, or adding in to develop a new calendar option with an accompanying regulation. And then you had language in there about what the regulation would be doing. But it can be done separately or together. It's really the board's-
So I, I see them as separate issues because I think what Ms. O'Mech is trying to get to is another choice that we can talk about and support. What I'm trying to address is those long-term concerns so that the community can always have clarification on what is driving our decisions. And, and also have that clarity with respect to how we are implementing this in our schools so that we are doing so with fidelity. So I, I don't want to mesh them, but I also wanted to speak so that we had clarity.
Sure, I understand. Separate, I mean, obviously, you know, you've shared the language and it could come up and the board can discuss it. I've seen it and I, I understand what your intent is and, and follow up.
I was trying to give you an opportunity to speak to it before, but the conversation went a different way.
Right, right, yeah. You know, I'm sure we'd have a few minor questions. You asked some things about student absences specifically, but it's nothing that we couldn't follow up on and answer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax, followed by Ms. Ismorehizer.
Hi, yeah, I'm trying to type into the chat bar what I would like to add because it seems that there is some support. As long as he is considering these, I would like it as a bullet point. Consider the use of floating, of two floating holidays that could be used for religious observations or cultural celebrations in our calendar.
Are you asking for that to make part of this?
Well, when you're, if you're talking about, this is developing a new calendar. Yes, I'm talking about having that as one of the consideration points as, as these other bullet points are. So I would ask the maker of the motion.
Well, I, I think, right, I think, I think, I think the motion now belongs to the body. I was told, so unless there are any objections from anybody. Are there objections? Ms. Cohen, I saw your hand go up. Go ahead.
I, I just don't-
I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Yes, it is an objection.
Okay, then I guess we have to- I'm not like, Dr. Anderson, you want to jump in?
I'm just turning my video on. At this point, if you have an amendment that you would like to make to the motion, Ms. Darnak Kofax, we will have to get that seconded in order to amend the existing motion. So why don't you offer up whatever that language is? If it's this plus the, the statement that you just made, that's the amendment that would have to be seconded, voted upon, and added to, to this motion. Does that help, Ms. Pokarski?
It sure does. It sure does if we're gonna do this in a work session. Okay, go, Ms. Darnak Kofax, if that's what you would like to do at this point.
Yep, I'll offer it as a motion.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
It's an amendment, right?
Amendment, amendment.
Ms. Pokarski, McLaughlin will second the amendment.
Okay, would you like to speak to this, Ms. Darnak Kofax?
I have it linked. I don't think I need to. I think everyone understands. I think the body understands as well as the superintendent.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I, I would very much hope that our colleagues will support this. Again, it's for the superintendent's consideration. Given what we've seen, the large number of religious and cultural observances for our diverse community, this along with the regulation may give us the opportunity to be as inclusive as possible. So I really hope people will add this bullet point for the superintendent's consideration.
Okay, I guess do people want to speak to this amendment now? Ms. Ms. Ismorehizer?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to this. I just have concerns because I, I don't really understand how a float, I think Ms. Cohen mentioned this, how a floating holiday is really different than the excuse absences we have now. There's still the issue of putting the burden on the child to have to choose to miss events or education or, you know, SGA, you know, elections or whatever it may be. So I, I guess I don't understand how this is really that different than what we currently have. And so I'm not sure I can support that. I, I don't mind the superintendent looking at a variety of ways to, you know, as, this is any and all equity considerations to be, you know, more caring of all our diverse populations. But I just don't understand this one in particular.
Okay, Ms., thank you for that. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. You know, when I first heard this, I thought, well, why isn't this a second motion? But in hearing the conversation, I actually wonder if this is an inclusivity tool, a way, a way of addressing inclusivity that is not, that has not been addressed in the past. Because the data that was provided to us has about seven or eight different holidays or observances that have spikes in, in absenteeism, some smaller than others. And what it does is it doesn't tie the religious observance to a minimum number or a threshold that must be met before a date is incorporated into the calendar. And I would almost suggest that this is actually a three-part process. One is the calendar as put forth with, by Ms. O'Mech and Ms. Maron. The second piece is to place the- place an additional tool in the toolbox in the calendar, which is to be more explicit about religious, two floating holidays for religious observants. And the third is the regulation that I believe Ms. Kiesgau Mara is going to put forth in a couple of moments. And so I would just see that these are all part of the fuller picture. And that's why I am, I can support it if that is how you see it, Ms. Darnett Kofax. And I'd like to hear from Dr. Braybrand if he sees that as part of the, the overall approach that we're looking at.
I'll speak first.
Go ahead.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. It's another tool in the toolbox to consider.
And Dr. Braybrand?
Dr. Braybrand?
Yeah, I, I don't see it as a mandate. I do see it as one more item that we should be reviewing as we're working at developing the calendar. Thank you.
So with that, I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't understand how floating days, I definitely, to co-opt Ms. Kiesgau Mara's language, I understand the idea of blackout days so that nothing could happen on those days that, you know, disadvantages our students. But floating days, I, I, I don't functionally understand how that, that does anything to solve the problem that we're in of all of these things that happen. So I just, I, I, I just don't understand, I just don't understand how this is any different.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Omeish.
Turning on all the stuff here, I'm a little slow.
Sorry, Ms. Pakarski, no, I actually, I apologize. I meant that as a question. I don't, I just want someone to explain. I, I'm sorry.
Okay, were you asking the maker of the, of the amendment? Go ahead.
Sure, or Dr. Braybrand, if he sees it in effect as being something different than what we have.
Well, let me say this. I think, but language matters, we know that. Blackout dates may speak more to what would be in a regulation about what would be prohibited. A floating holiday is a grant of giving a student the opportunity not to be there. A blackout date, I think, goes a bit further and says what will not happen at the school on, on a specific day. So I do think they're a little bit different. One is about the individual who is exercising the ability not to be in school. The other is about what happens with everybody else while they're in school and certain individuals are out. So I do think a floating holiday and a blackout day have actually slightly different meanings. And again, I'm, I'm not taking all of these bullets as there are things that I need to review and consider. I, I don't, again, you all will decide in your conversation. These, these are things for me to, to account for, to review, and may or may not be used. It just, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think, I meant the difference. I apologize. I did not mean to speak right over top of you.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just meant the difference, like, in, in real effect of what's the difference between a floating holiday and right now that it's an excused absence.
I think one would be more how we've messaged it, probably. An excused absence, we have a list of things that are an excused absent, excuse absence. A floating holiday is somewhat, in my mind, again, just thinking out loud, is a more elevated statement that these, there are many holidays, some that we celebrate in the calendar, that are national, federal holidays, and others that represent your particular faith or cultural tradition. And because there are many of them, we, we have two floating days for you to have a chance to honor them. So I, I think maybe more inclusive language around something that we allow through a more general regulation is being elevated and being specified. It's being named by mentioning floating holidays and then specifically having guidance for what that means. That's what, that's what I think of when I hear that idea from Ms. Darnett Kofax.
No, that's helpful. That's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And Scott, you're, you're spot on to how I'm thinking. And also another example could have been, you know, students allowing, a lot of the, kind of the way we put into regulation, the allowance for students to engage in civic engagement. It became a messaging issue where we were able to then just, just, just highlight the importance of that. And I think this way, we, we could, through regulation, highlight the importance of religious observations and cultural celebrations in our, in our, within our community. As a tool, again, I'm not mandating this. This is just an additional bullet point to look at as a tool.
No, that's super, that's super helpful. And I think just for me with support, if this was coupled with the blackout day, I definitely could, could get my, my brain around it. So all of that was very helpful. Thank you both.
Excellent. Dr. Anderson, your hand is up.
Thank you. I will be quick, but I'm going to continue to belabor a point that I've been making all morning. And this is a point that I talked to Dr. Williams about earlier. I am happy to support this amendment that is provided by Ms. Darnett Kofax, only because as we just talked about it, I think Ms. Corbett-Sanders also referred to this. Even on the list that we received today, there are eight days that are possible observances for our community. I, I don't think it's feasible that we're going to add eight days of religious observances to the calendar. That doesn't seem to be realistic at all. So at some point, we're going to find some criteria and we're going to say, if you're above this threshold, you get to have yourself be included. That does not seem to be in keeping with what Dr. Williams shared earlier, which is how do we send a message that we see all of our students and all of their needs? I think having this opportunity, and we do need to be more robust in terms of these floating, maybe the term, it's a little bit too, too weak. But we need to find a way to say that if you make it, if you are any one of these eight or the five that I could think of right off the top of my head and I'm not even on this page, if you need to observe it, then you have the time to do so. And we are not going to penalize you. You will not to consider yourself less worthy than the ones that have been identified. That's why I think this is such an important piece. It gives me the space to be seen because I observe something that I don't even see here. So I wouldn't see myself on that list. So I, I really want to be sure that we see this as the opportunity to be more inclusive, to say that it's not the top four, but it's all of the 40 on the list because it could be that long. So I will be glad to support this, this motion because I think it gives us an opportunity to be much more broad in terms of supporting our community. So that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Ismarizer, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question about the list of the bullet points from Ms. Omeish. If I may just get a clarifying question, when you're looking at instructable concerns and disruptions, I can pull it down.
Ms. Ismarizer, I think right now we're talking to the amendment. If you could focus your comments to that.
Yeah, I, I always said that earlier, so I'll take my hand down and I'll wait to speak to the main motion later.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. We are bearing all over the place. Here, Ms. Omeish?
Yeah, I have a slightly different understanding of this than Dr. Anderson, but my, my concern is I don't want us to get confused by the floating days idea to think that we're making progress when it doesn't necessarily help anyone in a tangible way. So just to be clear again, following on what Ms. Cohen was saying, Mr. Smith, I think earlier may have clarified for us, but I just wanted to ask again, there is no difference between excused absences, which we currently have, and floating days, right?
Correct. A student has the ability and families have the ability to excuse their children for religious observances currently as, as part of regulation.
Okay, and so under, under the floating days model, we would still, I mean, kids would still miss whatever is scheduled on that day, right?
Yes, they would, because it would be, in a sense, an individual holiday, which would be the same as an excused absence for that particular day. And I know that we have some numbers tied to these particular holidays with two. And I do have questions about those students who may need to observe more than two religious holidays or two cultural observances part of the year. So that is a question that I would put forward to the board as they're considering this amendment.
No, I appreciate that. Dr. Williams, can you lean in here as well?
Dr. Williams, would you like to jump in here?
I think her mic is on, but we don't hear anything.
Don't hear. Um, okay. We can maybe go back later if Dr. Williams would like to offer some comments. Colleagues, can you do me a favor? Hands have gone up several times. If you don't mind putting your hand down if you've already spoken to this amendment, I still see we have Ms. Tolan. Mr. Fresh, you have not spoken to this. Oh, you. Yes, Mr. Fresh, you're next. We can't hear you, Mr. Fresh. Or maybe it's me.
No, we can't hear him.
No, we can't hear you. I'm sorry. I'm, I've been booted off too, which is part of the hand issue.
How's that?
That's better.
So my, my opposition to the, the motion stems from my first question to Mr. Smith, which was, is there any difference between this and the status quo? And the answer was no, there's not. And so I, I don't accept the, I appreciate where the, the want is behind this, what the, the goal is. But the status quo isn't sufficient for me and I, 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 my fear is that in passing this amendment, we get back another version of Calendar C. Or at least we open the door to another version of Calendar C, which did not take any effort to look, make any effort to consider the other bullets that are listed. So I'll be voting against the, the motion. And, or excuse me, against the, the amendment because I think it still leaves all of the problems that led to the conversation around these, these observ, these observances anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I see you're back. Go ahead. And then we're gonna go with Ms. Tolan. And I will tell everyone, it is 4:00 PM. So we, we will be breezing past that end time.
I'll be quick. I'm hoping that you all can hear me. I think the devices that we are talking about absolutely allow us to achieve some flexibility. The, the question, very similar to Mr. Fresh's point, and a few other board members have amplified this, is still the question of what is the goal we are trying to achieve as it relates to inclusion around the religious observances and culture? Is that still, is that the conversation that we're having? These, these ideas that are outlined are absolutely considerations that we can be more transparent and clear on. But what is the goal that we want to achieve? And is this a goal that will take more than one scheduling cycle?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I can support this amendment mostly because it does say, consider the use of the two floating holidays. So it's just asking that that is something that we're going to be taking a look at. And I appreciate the semantics difference that Dr. Braybrand described, maybe elevating these holidays or these floating holidays over just excused absences. I was thinking about it, though. I do want staff to really take a look at, from the staff viewpoint, we've kind of really, I think, been talking about students. I would think that there are probably some really significant HR considerations and things that need to be looked at for this idea for staff. So just putting that out there, that I'm happy to have it considered, but, but really understand that this could be significant.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Kiesgau Mara?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to ask Ms. Williams a question because I think I may be looking at this a little differently than some of my colleagues. With the considerations listed here, conceivably, and I'm not saying this is the answer, but I'm, conceivably, I could see the superintendent suggesting that perhaps two of the holidays listed would actually be on our calendar. But then we also allow families to decide that they want to use another day or two, thus using the language that Ms. Darnett Kofax is offering for a floating holiday. And so I'm seeing this as a possibly, a new way of looking at how we do calendars that may indeed give our community greater flexibility in an effort to recognize what we have not, we may not be able to give all the days, but we want to give greater flexibility. So, Dr. Williams, does that make sense? Or are you asking us to further dig down as to what we're trying to accomplish? I really want to do that. But I, I do see this as perhaps we're turning the corner into, into greater creativity in an attempt to address the plurality you had mentioned earlier.
Thank you for asking that question. I, I would submit it's a both and. I think we're doing the things to increase, increase the flexibility and the opportunities. And if we center what is most important in our decision-making around focus, then we're getting closer to that pluralism that, again, it may take us more than one cycle through to ultimately realize the goal, given the diversity of our population.
Okay, so with that perspective, because I, I hear some of my colleagues saying, well, this is the same thing we've done before. I just want Ms. Omeish to understand, that's not how I'm looking at this. I see us stretching a little bit to try to figure out how to solve a pretty complex problem. And so for that reason, I would want this language that Ms. Darnett Kofax is proposing to be in the toolbox. I am not suggesting that it be exclusive. I'm asking, I would think that it would be an additional way to cover more communities. And so that's the way I'm looking at that. So I will support Ms. Darnett Kofax's language.
Thank you. I believe, Ms. Marin, you haven't spoken, and I would like the opportunity to speak because I haven't had one at all this entire work session or before.
We've spoken, so go ahead, Stella, and I just wanted to add on afterwards, if you don't mind.
Ms. Marin, would you like an opportunity or?
Well, Stella, can I go after you, please?
Um, sure. I guess I will, I, I will say there is a little bit of frustration coming from where I'm sitting right now because I feel like we've jumped into a well-intended motion amendment at a work session, which, you know, many of my colleagues know I have issues with because of the lack of transparency with, sharing with our community before we take these votes, you know, in board meetings. With that, but I feel like we, you know, we have these out there, but we, we still, as a board, have not really answered the fundamental questions at heart here, which is, you know, how, what do we prioritize in these calendars? And how do we see that playing out in a school system where, you know, we saw the data had many competing religions? And I just, I don't know that we're giving the superintendent any of the intended direction that I would have liked to see coming out of this work session. And I think that is a problem. But anyway, I, I will go. session. And I think that is a problem. But anyway, I will go on. Ms. Maron, you are next.
Yeah, I'd like to call the question, please, on the amendment.
Okay. Are there any objections with calling the question?
I thought Ms. Corbett Sanders had one last comment. I hate to. So that would be my objection to cut it off. It just seems like there was only one other person who wanted to speak.
Yeah, Ms. Maron, to save the time of going through the, would you be okay with us proceeding with Ms. Corbett Sanders?
And has Ms. Corbett Sanders already spoken to this amendment?
It is a 55 second.
No, I'm sorry. Then, 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 then I don't, I don't. It's past our ending meeting time and everyone's spoken. So I'd like to please call the question.
Thank you. Is there a second to Ms. Maron's request? Are you seconding calling the question, Ms.? Okay. There is not a second, so we will go back to the queue, Ms.
I'll second it. I'm so sorry. I will say, I'll second it.
Okay, Dr. Anderson has seconded. All those in favor of proceeding straight to the vote on this amendment, please raise your hands. Ms. Maron, Dr. Anderson. Okay, all those against? Darnett Kofax, McLaughlin, Keys-Gamaro, Tolan, Pikarski, all those abstaining? Okay, well, that fails. Um. Thank you. I think we need to go back to the queue, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Please make your comments quick to this amendment so we can vote on it and go back to the main motion. Ms. Corbett Sanders, did you not want to speak now?
I think we lost her.
Okay, Ms. Darnett Kofax, go ahead.
I was waiting to see if she was reconnecting. She back? No. All right. I just, okay, I just really do want my colleagues to understand that several, several few made points even better than I could because I chose not to speak to it because I, I made the points earlier. But this is up for consideration here. And as Ms. Keys-Gamaro and, and Dr. Anderson talked about, we are not going to be able to accommodate the many, many religions and religious or cultural celebrations that so many of our families can do with, probably without doing year-round school. So, and if we do need more than one go-round on how best to do this, I think we can. But for consideration only this year, I think this does allow flexibility for families. It does allow another day. There is nothing here that is meant to be status quo. It is meant, as Dr. Brabran talked about, to add additional messaging, communication, making people understand if we were not able to accommodate your observation, religious or cultural, on this calendar, you still have that option. This was never meant to impede. It was meant, or to meant to status quo. It was meant to continue and to allow more opportunities for families' celebrations and observations.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you back on? I unfortunately do not see Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Omeish, I think you've spoken to this amendment twice. So please make it extremely quick so we can vote.
I think I spoke once, but I had a question for staff. Would floating days be at all reflected in a calendar option you'd even bring to us?
Well, I mean, when you say we could have something written under the calendar about that everybody would have a certain number of floating holidays, yeah, could it? Yes, is the quick answer.
I mean, would it?
Well, I don't know. We haven't done it yet. I mean, that's what you all are debating, whether this is a mandate. I'm not taking it as a mandate that I'm going to do it. I've been asked to consider it, and I will.
Okay. I mean, I think, guys, the motion is specifically asking for us to look at a calendar option. Floating days is not a particular piece of that. We, you know, my concern, as I've said, is this is going to allow us to think we're doing something when we're not doing anything. And obviously, the sentiment of including everyone is 100% there. I mean, we all agree with that. So I just don't see it, my, I can't support this because I don't want us to think we did stuff for equity that we didn't. And I particularly appreciate Dr. Williams's point to that effect. And again, I just remind folks, this is about a calendar option. If we want to do tack-ons, blackout days, you know, floating days, whatever, that's a separate discussion. I just don't see how this was made as an amendment to my motion, but.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Omeish, for sharing. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you've been kicked off again, and we have got to take this vote. So all those in favor of this amendment as presented by Ms. Darnett Kofax, please raise your hands. Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Maron, no, Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, and myself. All those against?
I'm sorry, did you get my vote?
I did not. Are you voting for this amendment?
I am voting for this amendment, and I have been on and off trying, getting back in.
I know. I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders. We will record your vote for this amendment. Go ahead and take your hand down of all those opposed. Ms. Omeish, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Sizemore Heiser, Ms. Maron, anybody abstaining? I believe. Okay. Did that, I think that motion passed?
It did.
Seven, five.
Excellent. Okay, now we have got to go back to the main, main calendar motion as presented with by Ms. Omeish. So we have Ms. Maron.
Yes, I'd like to call the question, please.
Hey, is there a second to, okay. All those in favor? Go ahead, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I asked for the, for the inclusion of the term, term inclusing, inclusion. And after conversation with Ms. Omeish, she said, although she had no problem because, but she thought it was included by her saying, but not limited to. So could we, unless somebody has objection, and then we, otherwise we'll have to have an amendment on it, I'd like to have the language saying inclusion on there, inclusive on there.
Okay. Is there any objection by the body?
I assume you mean a bullet.
Yes, I mean a bullet.
I do not see any objections. So can we please add that to the main motion?
Thank you.
And go back to our speakers. Has everybody had the opportunity to speak to this motion?
I believe that question has been called.
The question was called. I'm sorry. That was a form of order. Okay.
And I believe it was seconded as well by Mr.
Yeah, it was. I got, I got that. Thank you. All those in favor of going ahead and voting on this, please raise your hands. Ms. Maron, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Cohen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Fresh, Keys-Gamaro, Ms. Tolan, Corbett Sanders, myself. This passes. It seems to be unanimous. Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Tolan. Okay. Let's call the motion. All those in favor of directing the superintendent to develop the new calendar option as outlined in this, on your screen, please go ahead and put your hands up. Ms. Maron, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Omeish, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Keys-Gamaro, Ms. Sizemore Heiser, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, and myself. That is unanimous. I think we are at a place where we can finally end this long work session. Dr. Anderson, if there, I'm sorry, Dr. Brabran, if there are no questions from you, we can all go about our evening tonight. Mr. Fresh, you have a question?
Sorry, I was stretching.
We all need to stretch.
Well, thank you, Ms. Prikarski. Thank you, School Board. And I will follow up as you have directed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Great job, Stella. Thanks for navigating.
Thanks, all.